We always do in our meetings with prayer Pastor James.
I'm standing up.
Let's all stand if you wouldn't mind. I know we just told you to be seated, let's stand again. And let's all go to board and pray tonight. Father, we just thank you so much for your grace and your goodness to us. Thank you, Father, for our community in Wise County. Thank you so much for people that are willing to serve in our community. Tonight, I want to thank you for all of these candidates here tonight, and I want to pray a blessing over them. I speak blessing over them personally, as well as over their households and their family. And I thank you, God, for their desire to serve their community. I ask tonight that you would work through us, that you would give us wisdom and understanding in all things. We thank you for your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, so a little bit about Wise Conservatives. We started a few months ago. This is an impromptu kind of small meeting, but the main thing is we want to make sure that we get this out on social media so that folks can make a decision both as voters. This is not the Republican Party. This is a conservative group that we started called Wise Conservatives. We have a GPAC and we have a board. And so everyone that's a member of the board will watch this. And if they're not already here seeing it tonight, and we will vote and we will announce. If we decide to endorse someone, we may not decide to endorse. That will be announced next Monday at our meeting. Chad Braker is coming to speak and we will announce it. There will probably be a very large crowd for that, and we will probably ask for volunteers, if anyone that we decide to support, to be able to help us and give us a hand. So there is a real number of people that have been members of Wise Conservatives for the last couple of months. We've reached a ton of people. So a little bit about Wise Conservatives. Our main goal is to connect to conservatives in Wise County and make a difference in the primary. We want to educate those folks and get them situated so that they can actually go out into the community and actually make Wise County not just a Republican county, but an actual conservative county that supports the values that are actually espoused by the Republicans and the GOP platform. So with that said, you know, it's my belief that the purpose of anyone who runs for office is to protect and defend the liberties of Texans. And that's no less than a school board than any other office. In fact, you know, one of the quotes I found today that was very interesting from Samuel Adams is, "Virtual knowledge are diffused among the people. They will never be enslaved." This will be their great security. So even school board members, their main goal, in my opinion, is to ensure that we collectively can protect our liberties and can stand up for our ideals and principles that are espoused in our constitution of Texas and the constitution of the United States. So with that said, we are going to have a forum tonight. There will be one and a half minutes for each candidate to introduce themselves. And each question will be given by Pastor James here. He will be our moderator. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. And then we're going to turn it over to any audience questions that might have. So it'll be a short, very probably accelerated forum, but hopefully it'll be productive. We'll get it all on film. We'll put it on the internet right after the meeting. So James, why don't you go?
Very good. That'll be the candidates. Oh, yes. Check. Are we happy?
Not yet. Can you say something?
Check. Oh, there it is. All right. Oh, maybe. There's a signal. One second.
Oh, the wire might be a little loose.
Oh, of course.
That's probably what that electrical sound is.
Check. One, two. Good. Wish you guys just love technology.
There it is. Oh. Okay, we're just going to hold this and see how it's going to turn. All right, we have the microphone right there. What we're going to do is we're just going to ask each of you to, if you wouldn't mind, just take about a minute and a half to introduce yourself. Just if you wouldn't mind, let's stand and give us your name and tell us what you're running for and tell us a little bit about yourself, but we'll keep it concise. Sound good? Dr. Joanie, would you go ahead and get this on?
Good evening, everybody. Are we on?
Oh.
Is the green light on?
It is.
I don't know. Signal here. Check.
Check. No. This is part of your minute and a half.
Seriously, dude.
Hey, if anybody is ever around church, you know what these are called. These are called the sad leaves. I show up on Sunday morning about three minutes prior to service is when these happen.
Can you try to say something, please?
Good evening. Hello. Hello.
Maybe it's the usual one. We can just talk really loud. I'll talk loud. Let's get that.
All right, there, man. Good evening. My name is Matt Joyner. I am proudly running for place five on the Decatur Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'm a proud father to five kiddos. Our son, Jackson, attends Angelo State University as a marketing major. And then we have Trinity, who is a seventeen-year-old junior at Decatur High School. We have Reagan, who is in a field event right across the way over here this evening. She's a seventh grader at McCarroll. And then we have two kiddos, Leah and Kendall, who live in Rand Elementary School. My daughter and my wife, Dawn, is here this evening, as is my dad, Jerry, sitting over there as well. So I think, you know, obviously, my desire to be on the board for a third term here at Decatur ISD is the opportunity to be a voice for our community on the board, an educator's voice on the community, understanding that there are a lot of issues that we face as school board members that require a little bit of inside information. I feel like that's been my career path, has been that of an educator. Taught at Decatur, taught at Northwest Independent School District as well, Weatherford College. Had great experiences, and I feel like I have a lot to lend to the Decatur ISD Board of Trustees. That's me.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Melanie Christian, and I am the proud mom of three grown adults with seven grandkids, from like one and a half to nineteen years old. And they've all been through the system, all but one of them, and he wasn't from Decatur. But all my sons-in-laws and daughters-in-law and my kids have been through Decatur, and my husband also, but not me. So anyway, I'm in a true blue, as he always says. But I am an educator. I've been in education. I retired four years ago. I've been here twenty-eight years in education, teaching in elementary pretty much my whole career. Ended with being a principal at Rand Elementary here at Decatur. I was already tired and I loved every minute of it. I have had various experiences. I've been also at Northwest, great, great district, right down the road, great district. And I think as we are growing, because we are growing and we can't deny that, we've got to look to those districts that have been there. Northwest has been there. I was there when it was just tipping off. And I began to see how they structured systems to put in place to help them move toward that growth. They had things for their staff development, for their teacher training, for their students, would all get the same curriculum. So those are things I see as a real need at Decatur ISD. I see that our instruction is not aligned right now. We've had a lot of leadership change, and that kills us. We've got to get consistent. We've got to hire good leaders to begin with, do our homework. We can't just make rash decisions on a spur of the moment. But I'm for the kids. I mean, you can ask any teacher that was under me. All decisions were made based on what comes best for our kids. And even if it might have been a little extra work for the teachers or the administration, we did it for the kids because they're the ones that we're here for. It's their future we're creating, and I want them to have the best opportunity my kids have. And so I'm going to work as if they're my own, because a lot of parents don't... They don't feel sometimes welcome in a school setting, or they feel intimidated coming to a school setting. And I want to be the one to encourage them to come. We need to hear from our parents, but I'm their voice if they don't feel comfortable coming to the school. So I'm here for our kids. Thank you.
First of all, thank you guys for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. My name is Dylan Barnes, and I'm running against Matt Joyner for place five at Decatur ISD trustee. I'm the father of three kids, fifteen, nine, and eight. Go to high school. The two girls go to Rand. I'm an entrepreneur, business owner. I own a pediatric home healthcare company based out of Decatur, where we serve especially kids in the Wise County and surrounding areas. Then I also own two water service businesses. So I have a real passion for serving and giving back to the community. I've been in Decatur since about 2012, been involved with esports, giving back to the community. And my main drive for running for school board was to be a voice for the community. With the way we're growing, I feel like we really need to be on the right path and grow in the right direction and with the right values. And there's going to be a lot of hard questions that need to be asked and a lot of hard decisions that need to be made. And I feel like being on the school board and be able to voice my opinion of the community and really give back to them and make sure that we are growing in the right direction. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Schluter, and I'm running for place two, Northwest ISD School Board. I'm a long time, in fact, I've lived in Wise County most all my life. I was born here. I'm the only current board member that resides in Wise County. So even though we don't represent areas, we represent every kid in our school district. I'm proud to represent the folks on the west side of the district. I grew up in the district. I went to Roma Elementary School and on to Northwest High School. My father actually graduated from Roma High School before we consolidated back in 1949. He was a teacher, a school board member, and I heard a lot from students that said, "Thank you to your dad because he meant a lot to me and my future life." So that meant a lot to me. I served as an engineer, graduated from Texas A&amp;M, a degree in civil engineering. I served as the Wise County engineer for about thirteen years, so glad we could build some highways for you. And I know that problems, any problem needs more up here. There's growth coming. So one of our former superintendents, I'm going to steal a phrase from her, and Matt worked for her, Dr. Root. See, so we are training teachers to teach children to find jobs that don't even exist now. So it's all about being on the cutting edge, not the bleeding edge, but the cutting edge of what our kids need for education to be successful in a crazy technology world. We talked about technology when we first got started. So I've loved serving our kids, our districts, our patrons, and I would love to continue to do so. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Lavane. I am also running for Northwest ISD. When I decided to run, felt like as a parent, to bring that perspective. I have four children, twin freshman girls in high school, at two different high schools, a middle school son, and then our youngest daughter will start kindergarten in the fall. And so we certainly understand the challenges of moving people around and getting across the district that is so large and the growth of our district. I've lived in Texas for almost fifteen years. All of it has been in Northwest ISD. So our children know other districts. We're certainly committed to that. As with the kindergarten coming on board, that's where we're going to be. And so as a parent, I wanted to try to see if I could help, you know, bring that balance of what we... The challenges we face as parents, along with what the school board needs and the teachers need, and kind of give a different, maybe a new perspective. Thank you.
All right, you can just go on with Mark, you would. That'd be good. We're going to go ahead and I'll... Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Since we were having microphone issues, we've made the executive decision for me to just yell. So I'm not yelling at you, so I'm just yelling to make sure that where the questions can be heard, okay? We've got quite a few questions here tonight. We're going to ask each and every one of you if you could, just for the sake of time tonight, to keep it, your answers as concise as possible. We're going to be looking at about, I understand we want you to be able to share your heart, but we're going to be trying to keep everybody to about a minute and a half, if that's okay? Don't worry if you get lost on time. Andy here will be holding up a little sign, about thirty seconds, so just look this way or we'll be going from there. So we have a few different questions here tonight, and there will be time at the end that we're hoping at the end for some Q and A from the audience, if that's okay with you guys? And so we're going to start tonight with a few platform questions. And these aren't specific to your ISD at this point. These are just for us to kind of get a general feel for some, potentially, might I say, they could be somewhat challenging questions. But I don't think any of you got into this position not to be challenged. So I think, is everybody okay with some challenging questions tonight? Yes? Okay. So let's go ahead and start. Mark, we're going to have you go ahead and kick off tonight. Is that okay?
Yes.
Kevin, I'm so sorry, Kevin. Yes, I met Kevin. So Kevin, we're going to have you, the first question's going to go ahead, and we're going to ask the same question for everybody. If you would, when you're done, just go ahead and pass it on down the line. From there, audiences, if you would just help us by, if you have any questions, if you can just hold it to the end, and so we can go from there. Okay? Good dream? Thank you, guys. All right, first question, and this is from platform values regarding what we would consider on the conservative side of the agenda, which would be a very broad and simple question, but maybe not so easy. The answer is, what is the purpose of government?
The simple answer is to stay out of the way. I would say the purpose of government is, do you want a school board aspect or just... You know, protect our borders, be frugal responsibility with common areas like roads, infrastructure, that kind of thing. Fix it where it needs to be, but don't overspend or get ridiculous. All the way down to local level, I think it's just to provide opportunities, or more so to not hinder opportunities for growth, for personal liberties, and that such.
Okay, thank you very much.
Same question.
Same question.
Well, I'm glad I didn't sit on the end. The purpose of government is to serve the people that they represent. Sometimes that's difficult, when you get laws that come down that have to be enforced. And the most important thing that we do as officers of government, as being elected officials, is communicate back and forth, two-way, letting them know the laws, the details, and let them know and help them to discuss that with you in making those decisions. Not always easy. Matt got warned quite a bit last week about decisions that, according to law, he has to make. They may not be his decisions. They may not be my decisions as a conscious person, but I will definitely weigh those out. And I will proclaim those in a meeting and let people know why I'm voting for things, because they need to know, because they elected me to serve them.
In my opinion, what the government is, is it basically is set forth a bunch of laws and rules that are based on the best guidance for the community, the state, and basically giving out guidelines and rules for what would be best, not always best, but just to kind of control how things flow from one direction to the other, do it from the schools up to the highest legislation, just mainly just a guidance for the community and the members.
Okay, y'all are going to stump me to begin with, aren't you? Okay, what do I think about government? Well, I really thought about that as they were all talking. Our founding fathers came over and began with the constitution. So we know that they put guidelines in place that we all need to follow. Remember, I'm a fourth grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher. I'm not way up there. So they put things in place that we needed to follow, big overarching umbrellas, I guess you could almost say. And those are still true, and everything that goes underneath that, from the state level or the local level, needs to align up with those things. So I feel like that's our founding, that's our principles, that's our laws, the things we have to go with. And then locally, we look how that looks to us, or from the state down to the local level. We have to have government for the big stuff. I mean, we can. I mean, I just killed myself, but I don't think we cannot have government. We have to have laws. They define what we are in our country. But we have to also be very careful with what those laws are and how they're being misinterpreted possibly and put down into the state level to the local level.
Well, the sure answer is the role of government is to make things far more difficult than they should be, in my opinion. And I think that, you know, the situation here at Decatur ISD that we're currently in with regard to the mask issue is a great example of things that are on an agenda or not on an agenda, things that are open meetings issues or not open meetings issues, interpretations by an attorney, for example. I think the role of the government in a perfect world would be to get out of the way and let the people who are at the local level govern the way that the community needs them to govern. What is it that the community values? What is it that the constituents who are voting, what do they value? What do they want to see? But obviously, within those confines, we do have laws. And the laws are what's tripping us up right now, the interpretation of laws. And, you know, that's the sticky part. That's the part that's not fun.
We can just go ahead and hold on that. We're just going to pass it right back down the road just to keep it simple tonight. Is that okay? All right, so the next question we have, and thank you guys so much. We wanted to kind of just, you know, come out of the gate and just run off the bat. Please understand that these are not specific to the ISD. These are just like general questions that we're asking from a platform session. Okay? The second one, and there's only three of them, and then we're going to move into the ISD specific stuff, okay? The second one is this. Do you believe that the parents have the right to choose how their children are educated, whether public school, private school, or homeschool? Do I need to say that again? Absolutely. Anytime you need me to ask again, just give me the heads up. Do you believe that parents have the right to choose how their children are educated, whether public school, private school, or homeschool?
The short answer is absolutely. Married to a homeschool mom, sitting on Route Three. Have always been a huge proponent of parents who choose to educate their children at home. That is certainly their right. They have every opportunity to do that. I think they should be required to have an approved curriculum that aligns with their beliefs as a family. I think that's very important. I have a lot of friends involved in Victory Christian Academy. Have a lot of respect for, you know, that local way that folks can educate their children. There's online options. So the short answer is absolutely, parents should be able to select that.
That's an easy one. I get that one. Most definitely. You know, the parents and other kids will better than any of us. So I had kids at Rand that came, and it just wasn't a fit for them. And their parents would come in and they'd try to give them some solutions, and it just still didn't work. So for every kid that flourishes, I need to find what best works for them. So yes, like Matt said, there's several different options out there. You have to sign off saying you're going to either homeschool them and with what program. You know, a lot went to Victory for us, and of course, there's so... Right, and charters. So there's so many online programs now. I mean, there's an abundance of them. But yes, absolutely, kids and parents know what's best for their kid, and we need to serve them the best way we can.
I also agree with Matt and Melanie. It definitely should be a parent's choice, mainly because not all kids learn the same way and not all kids can handle a public school. For instance, my daughter, one of my daughters has real high anxiety. So with the mask situation and all the changes due to COVID, her anxiety, there's no way she could go to school. So she had to do ASHers. Me, I would rather her be in for, you know, social skills and everything else of that sort. But at this point in time, it just didn't work. So if it wasn't for us having a choice, I really honestly don't know what we would do with her. We couldn't just drop her off the door and drive off. So yes, I mean, every parent should have a choice in any situation with your kid's education, whether it's masks, where they go to school, what they do. I think that's very important.
Easy answer, absolutely yes. And in fact, my granddaughter, she's actually doing online learning. I have a grandson that's graduating from Northwest this year. As I look at schools, it's opportunities for kids to take whatever they want to succeed. We have six academies at Northwest ISD. Kid wants to go into STEM, engineering or architecture, they want to go into the culinary arts. We have a culinary academy, aviation academy. So our job as public school board members is to come up with curriculum and ideas that will excite our kids about learning. If they want to learn from home, that's awesome. I have very dear friends that have in-home school teaching, and they have consortiums that they meet with. And we even have teachers from our school district that meet with them and help them to develop the curriculum. So again, it's the parents' jobs really to raise their kids. We're just there to educate them and provide opportunities.
I think the parents ultimately have the responsibility and should have the final say in what is best for their family, their children, and how they choose to raise them. I do agree that I think as public schools, we should have, try to create as many opportunities for the students and the families to achieve whatever it is, go to college and MIT and all that. Or if it's to be an air conditioning guy, or a plumber, or whatever it is, there's all necessary tasks. And I think just as a parent, you should be able to decide how is best for your child, your children.
You can stay standing. We're just going to keep running as we go here. Just keep it simple, okay? The next question I have is based on the Texas GOP platform. This comes directly from them. It is, do you support a law prohibiting the teaching of sex education, sexual health, sexual choice, or gender identity in public school? Need me to repeat the question?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay, the problem. Do you support a law prohibiting the teaching of sex education, sexual health, sexual choice, or gender identity in public school?
As a parent, I think ultimately my wife and I should have the responsibility to teach our children sensitive topics or those types of things, or at least have the option to choose what we went down exposed to at school and what we don't. And so would I be in favor of it not being in there? Yes. If you needed a yes or no answer. But I certainly at the very minimum want the option as a parent to opt my child out of that part of of whatever curriculum that would be in.
Wow, that's a pretty tough question. And the answer goes back to the first question, which is, what is government? And much like what Kevin said, is government should not create laws, even though I'm a lay pastor at a church and has it. So my Christian beliefs tells me that those things are wrong. And I will teach that from the pulpit each and every time that I speak. But as far as making a law, in fact, after the last meeting that we had, I called, I won't say who it was, one of our administrators, and I said, "Tell me how we stand on that law." We're a very conservative district. We're growing like crazy. We have twenty-six thousand students. And the more we get, the more diversity comes into our district. But we're going to stand as firm as possible within the law to make sure these things don't happen. That's why we have representatives. That's why we have senators. And that's why we should call them and tell them what we think about the laws and let them rule based on how we got them.
I definitely agree that it should be the parents' choice on how the kid is exposed to that. I mean, I understand that all kids will be exposed at some point because parent A told their kid in first grade, parent B in sixth grade. So at some point, there's a fine line of when you should have those conversations with your children. But I think it should be, like he said, your parents' choice of how they're exposed to that. Because the way I would expose my child is completely different the way somebody else would. So I would definitely stand behind something that gives us the right for a parent to choose on when and how they will be done that. And I think that's some information that could be given out to the parents, basically like a guideline where we use such-and-such theory or belief on how that would be presented. At that point, the parent would be able to choose how they wanted to go about that situation.
Well, I know in fifth grade, and probably some of you ladies can relate to me, back when I was in school, and I've been out a long time. But in fifth grade, we saw the way your body changes for girls. That's a long time ago, guys. And for the boys, they had, we went to see the same film, well, for boys. But they're still doing that today. Those films are still being shown to our fifth graders today. Now, you have to have parent consent before that's shown. And it's probably a thirty, forty-five minute showing. I don't know. I've never stood in there with them. The counselor goes and the nurse goes in there. But it's a choice the parent makes if they want their child to listen to that or see that little video. I do believe that as a parent, as a grandparent, even as a public educator, I would not want to bring that topic to the students myself. I think that's a very sensitive topic, and I think that should come from the parents. I also know that it's being pressured down upon us. I know there's books that are in our public libraries, our school libraries, that talk about lesbian families and different things. I couldn't even give the complete titles. But I know they're there in my library. Well, one of the school librarians told me this just recently, but I was discussing it with her. So I think that we, as a community, have to look at that very closely. And I know from our values and beliefs as Christians, I don't condone it. I don't think that's something we should allow to happen. But I do know, as, like I said, the government goes to the state, then it comes to the local. We have got to reach to our state government and make sure that doesn't make it to the local level. Or we always have a choice over it, because I don't want it for the kids at Decatur. I don't want it for any of the kids in Wise County. I want us to stay conservative as we are and keep our Christian beliefs and... And there's a man and there's a woman. Because young children cannot make that decision. They're too blind. It should not be the elementarys. And you don't even need it in middle schools or high schools. So I do not think it's a good thing.
I agree. Anything we can do to preserve Christian values, conservative values with our children is what we need to be doing. A health education class, I guess that would be, you know, perhaps a different discussion. And frankly, I think that one of the larger things that we need to be talking about is how any curriculum, frankly, whether it be literature, or health, or probably anything but math, we need to be talking about how educators are presenting the curriculum. In my never-to-be-humble opinion about this issue, there is never a time when my child should know the political leaning of his or her teacher, period. I do not want my child to know that they are a liberal. I do not want my child to know that they are conservative. That is not the role of the teacher. Does that happen? Unfortunately, it does. I'm seeing Mark shake his head back here. And, you know, we had a situation this year. My daughter came home saying, "Oh my gosh, you're never going to believe what we're reading." And I believed it, you know? But I think the educators have some choices in this regard. And in my opinion, they need to take the high road. They need to be selecting readings or ancillary assignments that reflect that of the community. And we've missed the mark zone in that regard. And I do believe that educators need to keep personal politics out of the classroom, period.
All right, thank you, guys. We're going to be moving into more ISD-specific stuff, so we're going to try to get it back into your wheelhouse. But we kind of wanted to lay a foundation, if you don't mind, and maybe throw a couple curveballs. Part of being leadership is how we handle curveballs and how we handle some of the unexpected things. So the first question I had, and Matt, if you would just begin with us, what specifically prompted you, and I'm talking about not general ideas, but what specifically prompted you to run for school board?
I think what prompted me to run for school board six years ago was the opportunity to have a positive effect on my child, on my children. I thought I was done with kiddos and God had different plans. And so now we have two more kids who are far younger than my biological children. So I want the opportunity to serve them. I want the opportunity to create opportunities for them, whether they're a special needs learner, which we have one of those at our house, and whether they're in ag, which we have one of those as well, all across the board. You know, how do we support with our resources, with our finances, each of those opportunities, understanding that every child is different. Very proud of what we've done with regard to college career, military readiness. I think that's very, very important for us to begin talking as early as, what, third grade, I think is where the teets begin, the Texas Centralization Skills begins to talk about what are you going to do when you graduate from high school? And then providing avenues for every individual child to navigate those waters and get to a place where they're comfortable with what it will be that they do as a profession after high school.
I'm in 2017, May 2017. And since I retired, we've had two superintendents, two high school principals, three middle school principals. No, I'll take that back. Two middle school principals and three principals at RAND, one of the elementaries. Okay? We all know that good leadership begins with consistency. And as a previous educator, you can't stand back when you start looking at the scores. We have three elementaries and two are D and one's a C. That's not acceptable for our elementaries. That's the foundation to build on your high school career. So I really decided to run because I have a lot of grandkids in the system, but I also have friends and children and I just, I have a heart for the kids. I want them to get that good education. I just feel like we're making some very, very poor decisions on our leadership. We've got to put some time into it and do our homework, like I said earlier, and make sure the people we're putting in that place are consistent. They know their background in education. We need to talk to them about instruction, curriculum, and ask them, what is their vision for us? And they've got to have buy-in with Decatur. And I'm not saying you have to live in Decatur because I know we're, we can kind of be a veteran community. But you've got to be vested in us. And it's not just a spot on your resume as you're moving up the ladder. We can't do that. So we've got to stop right now and do what's best for our kids. And I think it's looking at leadership that will take the courageous path. And we've got to hold everybody accountable to give their very best to our kids. So that's why I'm running.
So the main reason I'm running is, I said, I was able to watch, I've been looking to run, would have been last year, but was a little hesitant. But then after doing, watching COVID and all the experiences with that, and we got to actually sit in and watch the virtual school meetings, it really stood out to me that there wasn't very many opinions put out in public form. There was nobody, very, not very many people that would stood up and asked the hard questions, used the voice of the community and really put that in play. And I wasn't in the executive session, so I have no idea how those were. But for me, those conversations, the hard conversations need to be put in front of the public. I want the community to know that I'm back to them 100%. That I don't have a personal agenda, that I am taking all the input I get from them and asking the hard questions and doing what I think is right for the community based on their values, our conservative values, my Christian values, which is something I hope very strong to, and hope to keep in the school system and not let that expire out.
Now, I got to tell you, I first got on the school board many moons ago and there were six communities. And the east side of our community, which is Trophy Club, and the west side of our community, obviously socio-economically great distance between the two. So I got talked into running. I said, "We need somebody from the west side to help support our growth over here." So I've been on for 24 years on board. So I've seen it come from less than 6,000 students to 26,000 students. As an engineer, I know all about infrastructure, roads, water, utilities. And I know it's important because you have to have those to have a successful school to be able to get people there and out. So why am I running then? Well, if you've ever been in a classroom, and I've been in a lot of classrooms, and you see those kids, they get it, and the light bulb just comes on. They're so happy, they will give you the biggest hug. And I know it's hard to get hugs these days because of the sensitivity out there. But when you get a little first grader that has learned something new and you happen to be in that classroom and they give you a big hug because they're so excited by what they accomplished, people ask me, "Why did you run for school?" Because you see your students succeed. And you see them succeed and go beyond. And some people already mentioned college, that we have national merit scholars, we produce engineers and doctors. And just to see those people move on and be successful. As I told you, my father was a teacher and he always told me, "Mark, you need to get back." God has given you a lot of blessings. The school district has blessed you with education and I want you to get back. And that's basically what I've done. So the smiles of the kids just light my life up.
That's how, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Why I decided to run specifically, I think, was, I mean, my kids have been in the district for 10 years. We've lived here 14 years, freshman year was one. You know, and I've been involved with watch out programs, volunteering as a dad. I sat in the dunk tank for six years in a row, whatever, at elementary school. And now with the littlest one being older, you can kind of go, okay, we can take on a little more responsibility as a family with our service and our volunteers. And I think this past year, I certainly, as a parent, kind of got frustrated with, in, you know, my opinion, and not specifically towards anybody, because it was a unique year just with someone, communication and the direction. And not that I didn't agree necessarily to decisions, just sometimes there wasn't a decision. Or at least it didn't come across that way as a parent. And when you're trying to plan life with two working parents and four kids, you kind of got to go, we just need, we need somebody to take leaderships. This is what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And we're going to come back to you in a week, or two days, or three days, and this is what we're going to look at and evaluate. And so I felt as a parent, I can bring that perspective. Not that I have an education background, an administration background, something like a political background, but I know how life works and I think that's an important part.
All right, guys, we're going to move into a couple challenging questions here today more that are reflective of what's going on in our society. We've got many challenges, but we're going to go ahead and start getting into the hard stuff. Okay? So we'll just start with you. Thank you. It would be this. What is your stance regarding the transgender issue as it pertains to bathrooms, locker rooms, and participation in sports?
Well, as a dad of three daughters, it's certainly concerning. I don't think that, I think biology is biology. I don't feel like it's subject to interpretation. I don't have an issue with restaurants or whatever that want to put in single-use bathrooms that can just, it's open, it's open kind of thing. But I think as a community, or a communal bathroom, that's a challenge. And I don't even think it's necessarily just for elementary. I think I worry about the same thing with my wife. You know, if there's a bathroom, if there's a, I mean, this world is not, it's not made very, you know? We don't have that and that's a concern. You know, if I go to a restaurant, we were just at one the other day with my wife, and I go, "That's a, that's a really awkward bathroom situation." I said, you know, and it's just crazy. And I, so I don't think so. And I think sports, I think the challenge there is now you have, if you have biological boys or men competing against women, there's a safety concern. But then also at the same time, I mean, if we're competing for scholarships, I mean, the girls are already at a disadvantage. And now we're making it harder for them to succeed.
As I said already, I've kind of already approached our administration like, "Hey, if this comes down, what are we going to do?" And the answer is, just like when I was a kid, there were boys and there were girls. Nothing in between. So as I said, we are still a conservative district, even though the size that we have, 1,200 new students every year, got to have three places to put them. And we have to train those people on how we do stuff in Northwest ISD. So to answer your question, I believe we need to have boys doing boys' sports, girls doing girls' sports. Now, if there's a law that comes out, we're going to find it every way that we can. But again, boys are boys, the girls are girls, in my opinion.
I 100% agree with both these guys that I am totally against transgender, period, especially in the school district. I think it's completely, I mean, I have two daughters, I have a wife. I actually have a son that if we're worried about, I mean, we've had a lot of issues with the mask and lawsuits and this and that. But if we allow transgender, that's opened up a can of worms that we won't ever be able to get closed with lawsuits. Boy going in the girls' bathroom, vice versa. Teacher can't say anything about it because they're choose that day, whatever they chose. And to hear say, he said, she said, I can't even imagine what would happen. I feel as a school district that we need to get a, it's coming. We need to get ahead of it and get some things in place. And it doesn't need to be like the mask situation that we wait to the last minute. We still don't have a solution. Two weeks later, we still don't have a solution. We better be ahead of the curve before that gets here.
After I signed up to run for school board, I made an appointment to go visit with our superintendent because I never actually met him in person. So I went in and we visited and we talked about two specific, several things. But two specific things that were my concerns going in were the restroom issue with boys and girls and the liberal curriculum that Matt mentioned earlier. And he assured me that both of those would not happen. And I said, "Well, I've already been thinking of solutions for the bathroom situation. And on the elementaries, you've got just sequel restrooms that adults can use and staff can use. So we can make those into those type of restrooms." Now, the transgender, I don't, I don't agree with that. I'm not going to judge them. They each have their choice to make and they have their own creator to speak with about that in days to come. But every child that walks through a school door, a public education door, we have to let come to school. We cannot deny them their school learning. So if a transgender child walks in that door with his parent, we have to admit that child to school. Now, that's going to bring a whole can of worms with it. Because you're going to have social issues with the other kids in the building that has never been addressed before. We're going to have bathroom issues that's never been addressed before. You're going to have maybe a little bit in PE, possibly. Of course, you would in the intermediate, I mean, middle school and high school with the dressing rooms and stuff. So I would never hope that happens to Las County, but we're growing. And there are, we have diverse people coming in all the time with different beliefs and values than we have. So we're going to have to face those facts. I could not tell a child, "No, I'm sorry, I cannot," because they deserve about to free in public education like everybody else. So those are issues that will have to be thought of and rectified before they actually hit our doors.
Can we take a pause real quick? I need to change the battery.
Absolutely. We're ready? Do you need to, give me to say again one more time? Okay, no problem. What is your stance regarding the transgender issue as it pertains to bathrooms, locker rooms, and participation in sports?
Again, the short answer is I believe that God made men and women, male and female. And I believe that as a community, we need to support what our community reflects, which is, we don't necessarily subscribe to the idea that you can wake up as Dylan said and be a gender other than that which God gave you. So I think that's important. Regarding the sports competition piece, I think it's important to say, you know, as a parent of kiddos who are involved in rodeo stuff at the high school level that share locker rooms, and we have an up-and-coming basketball star, and I've got a cheerleader in the house. Do I want someone of the opposite sex in competing against those kiddos or in the locker room with them? And the answer is absolutely not. I think as Melanie said, the free and public education is a big piece that we do need to acknowledge. Whether we like it or not, you know, this may be something that comes up on our radar faster than we want it to. But it's something that we very much must address and we must fight in every way that we can locally to keep this issue local and keep our conservative values the way they are. We don't need, we don't need this issue. And as much as we can, fight back against it. That may mean going to Austin. That might mean going to Washington DC. That's going to be, again, as somebody said, you know, relying on those people who we have elected.
Follow-up on heels of that, regarding that issue. Obviously, we're touching on it because we all agree that this issue is coming down. It's unavoidable. It's something that we are going to have to deal with. And that being said, every single one of you said, used different language of willing to fight at a local level, different things like that. Let me ask this question. Would you be willing to fight mandates that violated our principles, such as forcing the district to allow genetic males to play female sports, even if it meant losing state and federal funds?
It's a great question. As the father of a student who receives funds under the federal government, that's a very hard question for me to answer because you would be saying no to funding that serves my child. So the short answer to that one is, I suppose I would be willing to risk it within the confines of the law, risk it by being vocal about my feelings on the matter, vocal with law, you know, elected officials on this does not support, you know, who we are as a community, or who I am as a parent, or, you know, what I want for my child. State and federal funding is what keeps the doors open. And so that's a big, big ask.
Yes, absolutely. Basically, would you be willing to fight mandates that violate our principles, such as forcing the district to allow genetic males to play female sports, even if it meant losing state and federal funding?
And that is a big, that is a big question. I was talking to Cindy Tatum, our financial officer the other night, and I was asking about how our students were funded in the Career Tech program. Because I didn't really know at the high school level how that was funded. And she said they get a percentage of the money from the state for each student, for our ADA, average daily attendance. I thought, okay. And then she said they ended up getting a federal grant. I apologize, I can't remember what it was, but it was a big one. And I said, "Oh, well, that's cool." She goes, "Well, not really, because the money we had over here that was from the state, we lost it because then the federal one came in." So I know the federal, it, as long as you get federal money, they contribute. And we have a large Hispanic population, and a lot of that is federal money. So, I think if we were to have to go down that path, if it became that bad, and we couldn't get a solution to make it work for us here at Decatur, and we had to go down that drastic path, I feel like we would need to come together as a community then, and figure out what is our solution if we turn down the money. I think it can't just be stuck with just Decatur ISD, okay, y'all figure it out. Y'all figure out how to pay for the teachers, y'all figure out how to pay all the resources you need, you make sure the Hispanics are educated and ready to graduate. I think it would become a community concern, not a Decatur ISD concern, and we'd have to really reach out to the community to help us, because the funding is crucial. And unfortunately, it's not fair, they tie our hands, because that's what they're doing. They tie your hands, and so you have to follow them. But creative minds think outside the box. We could maybe come up with some solutions. But it would definitely be a whole group situation we'd have to work on.
Yes, I would be willing to stand up and fight against that, like both of them said, at a certain level. I don't know the numbers of how much federal money we get and state money. I think I've heard, don't quote that, that there's been other schools that have not taken federal money, because what Melanie said, once you get the money, they control you. State money, I mean, we have to have a school, so at some point, our hands will be tied on that situation, but just like Melanie said, I think that's the point where we reach out to the community and say, "Hey, here's what we're lacking to get by and to still have great teachers," because the last thing you wanna do is get rid of teachers due to funding, and in our school, it's already struggling right now, and go down any further. So, I definitely feel it would fall back on the community, whether that's a bond to make things work out, but I also feel that if we can get ahead of it as Wise County and the school district, before it even falls in pace or in place, we'll have a lot better idea of how we could handle that situation.
Another interesting question. Basically, the way that I look at it is, I will fight tooth and nail to make sure that doesn't happen. Am I willing to give up funding? Our district is very unique, because if we got rid of our federal funding and our state funding, and we kept all of our current funding, we'd be better off. We're considered a donor district, much like Texas, it's a donor state. We give more back to the federal government than we give back, such as our district. Ironically said, last time, our district has given a trillion dollars away, but in fact, we gave away a billion dollars in Robin Hood. It used to be chapter 41, I think it's chapter 43 now. So, if we were able to keep our own money, then that's fine. I know our board probably better than anybody, and I would say that they would all support that fight with what it is. If we lost funding, and I lost that vote as one of seven, then I would resign from the board, because they wouldn't represent the values that I have.
As a parent, I'm glad to hear that. One way or the other, I'm happy, I mean, that's good to know. I think as a parent, absolutely, you know, I think you could easily say, "Well, we could get creative, we could think outside of the box." Our district is ridiculously growing, which is some of our challenge, but truthfully, it's also a blessing. But at the same time, you know, as a school board trustee, you're elected to represent the community, and so if the community didn't support that, then apparently neither Mark and I would be on that board, because as a parent, I wouldn't wanna be part of that. And so, yes, I would fight as much as you can, as long as you can, try to get in front of it, so it's not, doesn't come to that point, but if it does, then you have to live out, and you have to do what's best for our community and our students.
Tough question. All right, we're gonna turn quickly now. Obviously, we do have to touch on the mask and the quarantine issues. At Northwest, are you dealing with the same issues with masks and quarantine for current?
A little bit.
A little bit, okay. We're gonna ask you a question anyway, and right now, just for the sake of, you know, fairness across the board, it is an issue that is happening in Decatur right now, so... But I do wanna ask you guys, if you were at a school board meeting right now, would you vote to continue the mask mandate and quarantine policies, and why?
No. For me, I would. I feel, as a parent of four kids, one of having a... Born with a heart issue, and certainly concerns initially, but I think we have enough science, enough data to show where the danger is and where it isn't. And so, I think masks actually causing more issues from a mental health standpoint, and certainly potentially leading to breathing issues and those types of things, and I don't know if there's enough science one way or the other. But I think certainly leaving that as an option, and at least to say, "You wanna have your kid come to school with it, okay. If you don't, and we take the masks away, we're already set up to be virtual, we have some students and families that have chosen to stay home for immunohistives and those types of things, and that's completely understandable. That's their option." You know, I think a district as large as ours can certainly do that. It's not ideal, but it's certainly more weird to do.
Well, firstly, I hate stinking masks, and we have to wear them at my office, and I don't like them. So, what are we gonna do in the school district? Where our current policy is, we're gonna continue to wear masks. Do I like that? No. But here's why I support it, until our teachers get vaccinated. We've got about 3,000 teachers, some of their immune systems are not that strong. Luckily, the governor came in and said that they are gonna be treated like the first responders, so we've got teachers that are in line. So, after our teachers get vaccinated, then yeah, the mask should come off. So, we know most kids are not gonna get sick, but we do know they carry COVID, and so we're trying to really protect our teachers, and we understand the concerns. I understand the concerns. And I know the effectiveness of the masks, I've done my research, they're not very effective. I can spit on you 23 feet away, but I can only spit on you two feet away with masks. So, again, I know our teachers get really integrated and involved with our students, so just protect our teachers until we get them unvaccinated, and I support the mask.
I would vote against wearing masks and against forced quarantine. I feel like, in the beginning, yes, masks, because nobody had any idea what was going on, we didn't have a solution, but after all the data we've received, the masks that kids are wearing are not proper. They don't do the job, and then, all the kids that are wearing masks at school, they are not wearing those masks at QT, at Sonic, every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. The teachers are wearing the masks at school and are not wearing it at Walmart, so at the end of the day, if it was masks across the board, and you had to wear one everywhere you went, then, I mean, I would understand that, but that's not the case. There's so much flexibility, and everybody has... I think you should have a choice. I feel like the forced quarantine, there's been so many kids that missed out on social interactions, sporting events, you name it, because of said six feet, and it's been detrimental to the kids, and I feel like you shouldn't be self-quarantined.
If I had to vote today, I'd vote against making our kids wear the mask. And my main concern, you can get a physical, you can get COVID. I had it, my husband had it, and we survived. We had to be quarantined, which was horrible, but our kids are not gonna be as sick, and I know they can still take it home to a grandparent, someone elderly that possibly could be a high-risk person, and that's... And if they were to catch it, I would hate that. However, we've gotta look at that socially-emotional side for our students. When you've been in the elementary level, getting on up to that fifth, sixth grade, middle school level, oh my goodness, those little girls, and even boys, they get so insecure, and if they're only seeing you from here up, I promise you, they think you're talking about them, because they do that without the mask. Their self-esteem is just going down further and further and further. I can't quote any research stats, but we've heard it over and over, our suicide levels are getting way too high. And I was in middle school for one semester, suffering for an administrative illness, and I knew it happened, but I just could not believe how many children reached out to our counselor with no, that they were gonna kill themselves. They had a plan, "This person is talking about me, I'm gonna go do this after school." I mean, it is sad, it's very, very sad, it's very true. That is what's happening. So, but now, when I weigh the cost of physical illness versus the socially-emotional illness that's gonna affect them for the rest of their lives possibly, I'm gonna say no mask.
If you're asking me as an individual, me as an individual wants masks off of students months ago. It's time, there's no doubt about it. Students do not need to have masks on their face. Now, if I put my school board hat on, we're talking about two very unpopular votes that were very much within the confines of a policy that the school district set. I don't like it, but we also have seven school board members who can either put a policy review on an agenda or not, and up to this point, not one of us has. What happens next time we meet, God willing, is we're going to look at that policy, and we are going to look at what our quarantine policy says, regardless of what any health professional says, regardless of what any legal counsel says, and we're gonna review that, and we're gonna look at it again, and God willing, we're going to have a different quarantine policy, and we're not gonna have masks on our students, period.
We're gonna shift gears just a little bit. Thank you guys for all the answers. We only got about three questions left, and then we're gonna open it up for the board to ask, and hopefully we'll get some time for those who are with us to ask some questions tonight. What are your expectations of a superintendent for your ISD? And how do you plan to hold them accountable to the values of your community?
I think the... My expectation for the superintendent is to lead a team of seven people who very often have very diverse views about where the school district should head. Part of our role is to make sure that the management of the district, that our chief individual, that he is managing the district in ways that reflect our community. So, I feel like it's a partnership that we have to walk hand in hand to make sure that he is doing things, and he or she is making decisions that are in the best interest of our community. Would you ask a question one more time?
Sure, absolutely. What are your expectations of your superintendent, your ISD, and how do you plan to hold them accountable to the values of our community?
Truthfulness probably would be my top one. I need to be able to assume that if he or she says that, that you can take it to the bank, that what they're telling is absolutely true. They're held accountable annually, whether that's a performance review, whether that's an opportunity to review their contract, an opportunity to look at their pay. So, those are the ways that we held him or her accountable.
Well, I think the superintendent works with his group of seven school board members cooperatively, respectfully, and they begin, from that point, creating a vision for where we see the district going, because without a vision, we're all going in our own direction with whatever we want it to be. So, I think we have to first begin with that vision in mind, and then we sit down and what are the core beliefs we each have, we hold for our district, and then that's rolled out to his central office staff, and then the central office staff goes out to all the campus leaders. I think if we don't include, if he does or she does not include the campus leadership in all these decisions, then we're just throwing darts and never hitting the right point. So, accountability begins with us all being on the same page, us all having the same vision and views for our students to get them where they need to be, and then you begin to create specific goals, and we have a district improvement plan, and that's what that is all about, and we have campus improvement plans. But the part about accountability that James mentioned is, then we go back and we pull that district improvement plan, we look at those board goals that were created, and then everything that we're seeing, all these things that need to have happened, we need to make sure he can answer for this, or she can, and we see it as proven, as that's truly happened. So, the accountability comes back from the board goals and from your district improvement plan with the specific actions you put in place, and we have something to measure about. You have to have a goal, or you can't measure it. So, I think it just begins with very specific things that we're looking for to improve as a district.
Would you repeat the question one more time?
Absolutely, yes. What are your expectations of a superintendent for your ISD? And how do you plan to hold them accountable to the values of your community?
My expectations of the superintendent would be to follow the guidance of the board members, and that is, surrounded by the vision of the community. I feel like the seven board members, they work hand in hand. The board members basically set out, like she talked about, the vision, but the superintendent has to follow that vision. I don't feel like the board members should have to micromanage a superintendent. I feel finding a superintendent that fits the values in our community should be able to take this position and run with it, with a little bit of guidance here and there, making sure that he's staying between the lanes. I think a huge and very important part for a superintendent is communication. And communication with the community, the teachers, the administration, and you have to lead from the front as a superintendent. And if the bottom is not being successful, you're not doing something right at the top. I think holding them accountable is also following up on the vision, making sure that he's following the goals and the vision for the community, and if we're not doing something correctly, that he's the first person to stand up and make a change to bring that to the community's attention, to the school's attention.
The first thing to you is hire the correct superintendent, one that meets your values. And I've been through six superintendents since I've been on the board, and our values have not changed, but our district has changed. So, we've had some really not educated, and we've had some that are similar to coaches. So, both are important in the values that they have to inspire kids, so that's what we're trying to do. What all these guys have mentioned, as far as setting goals, setting objectives, those are based on, A, your student success, and B, the student learner as a continuous learner. So, as always, the superintendent leads our district from the internal side, us from the governance side, and them from the execution side. So, they execute all of the curriculum and things that get put together. So, it's important that they... Now, Dr. Horn is our superintendent, if you've ever met him, he's spoke in every community. Communication is key to him. He goes to every campus once a month, 19 elementary schools, six middle schools, three high schools.
I think accountability part, I'll kinda answer that part, is like you mentioned before, he's hired, or she... The superintendent is hired, the school board is elected. The school board's job is to represent the community, because ultimately, that's who we answer to. As a community member, you don't decide who the superintendent is, the school board does. And so, I think that part of it is where the accountability is, the contract, the continuing to pay raises and those types of things. I think their task is, should be to, ideally, it is a group of eight, to come up with that, what is our goal for the next year, the next three years, the next five years, create those plans at the top, and then his job or her job, the superintendent's job, is to make sure it is executed internally, from a teaching perspective, a curriculum perspective, facilities perspective, to represent that internal part, but then also, you know, the superintendent, right or wrong, has become the de facto spokesperson for the districts. I don't know, like, the community will either elect me or Mark, so I feel like we have the responsibility to also be part of the community and to be that person, at least one of eight spokespeople for the community.
What do you think are the most pressing concerns of the taxpayers, parents, and students of Northwest ISD, and how do you plan on addressing those concerns? Sure. What do you think are the most pressing concerns of the taxpayers, parents, and students of Northwest ISD, and how do you plan on addressing those concerns?
I think for us, it seems to be a general theme for the last, I don't know, two decades is growth. That is a concern, like I mentioned earlier, it's a challenge, but it's also a blessing. And I think sometimes we look at it as a negative, where it doesn't always have to be that way. Right now, we have four huge cons on the ballot. We had them on the ballot in a tax rate agenda as well in November, and they got overwhelmingly voted down. I don't think that's because people didn't wanna spend the money. I think in my conversations, it was more about an understanding of what is needed, and what that money's gonna be used for, and kinda back to, a theme is communication, and where, and effective communication, not just throwing things out there, but this is what we're gonna do, this is how we're gonna do it, and this is when we're gonna follow up, and this is how we expect you guys to hold us accountable for it.
And the most important thing that we have to do is maintain our high level of excellence. It's always so... It's always so important that we challenge our kids to make the next level, give them the tools to succeed. House Bill 3, these guys are very familiar with that, cut 10 million dollars out of our budget. Do we cut programs? Do we cut teachers? What do we cut? So we started to tighten our belt. And so the most important thing we looked at is maintaining our programs, keeping those programs available for our students. Kevin over here mentioned growth. Fast growth district, as defined by TBA, is one that grows 10% over 10 years. We grow at 8 to 15% every year, not every 10 years. So maintaining that standard is we have an influx of kids that move in every year. So critical. So keeping a high level of excellence is so important to keep our kids successful for the future.
James, could you repeat it quick?
Absolutely. What do you think are the most pressing concerns of the taxpayers, parents and students of Decatur ISD? And how do you plan on addressing those concerns?
Right now, I think our most pressing concern is for the community is uncertainty. Our community, I feel, doesn't, right now at this point with all that's going on is, I don't know, I think we're struggling to stand behind the board. There's been a lot of things that all year have gone up and down. And we haven't ever come to a conclusion where we didn't have to follow up and follow up and follow up. We're growing like crazy. We're going to need to pass a bond. But right now, our community, I don't think is standing behind what's happening. And with that, that's going to be a huge struggle for growth. I mean, we're at capacity at our middle school. We're going to need a bond to grow. Until we can get the community to back the school of what's going on, I think that's going to be our biggest struggle right now.
I think probably our biggest struggle that I see is, kind of goes back to what Mark said about excellence at Northwest. We're not there. And we're quite a ways from there. So I feel like right now, we've got to get things in place. Our kids cannot take another year or two off of learning. We had a COVID year. They didn't learn a lot at home. And I'm not saying it was a bad deal because our teachers, I'm so thankful for Decatur ISD for keeping things going for them and for getting our kids back in school. I'm very thankful. We don't live up north. But we've got to really, really tighten that grip, get a hold of our leadership, make sure we're not constantly changing. We've got to get consistent leadership. We've all have to get aligned on the same vision and get some good instruction happening in the classrooms and get our kids prepared and ready. Because that's part of that social emotional piece also. If they're behind, they know it. And they feel it. It bothers them. So I think my biggest concern is the learning of our kids. We need to really make sure it's there and happening for everyone.
I echo many of these concerns here. I do believe that growth is coming. We were talking just a moment ago with a gentleman from Northwest ISD. It's coming up Highway 287. It's just a matter before it gets here. So I do believe that we need to be looking at facilities. I know there's many people who do talk about the bond. And you have to have community support. And you have to have people believing in the superintendent and the board. I share Melanie's concerns regarding academics. I do believe that there is absolutely no excuse whatsoever to have two C, excuse me, two D and one C elementary school at Decatur ISD. There's just not a good excuse for that. We have to begin talking about academics more. I think our, you know, one of the first things that an individual does, you can ask any Realtor out there, when a mom or dad begins to look for a home, the first thing they do is look online. And they're going to look and see, okay, what are the school districts like in that area? Unfortunately, to a new family, to the Decatur area, they're going to be looking at districts to our south and north and east and west who have better scores than we do. And in my opinion, there's just not an excuse for that. Longevity, I share her concerns regarding the longevity of our administrators, specifically Rand and Meadowland High School.
All right, so last question I have. Okay. Thank you guys for being so patient. What three things would you like to see in the future for your ISD?
I'd like to see new facilities. I'd like to see students at McCarrill Middle School not crammed into a very aging building. I don't know if that means a new middle school or if that means a new high school. I'd like to see expanded opportunities for career technology education in the middle school. Specifically, programs that can be scaffolded in the high school where they can begin taking classes perhaps as a seventh or eighth grader that can play into a course of study for them at the high school. That's two. I guess I'll go back to the academic and longevity conversation as well. I want us to have longevity. I want that for our board. I want that for our administration. I want teachers to come here and be comfortable here for a very, very long time. I want us to invest in them professionally, in their professional development, to make sure that they are getting 21st century skills that are going to move the needle in a positive direction in the classroom.
Okay. If I could have my vision school of what I would like Decatur ISD to be like, I'd want happy kids that come to school laughing and smiling, glad to be at school, love to learn, love to learn. Because the learning is engaging, exciting. Teachers are great educators. They're getting the training they need from our central office staff or we're sending them to trainings. Or we have really great programs that we use, that we've created for our teachers to learn from. I'd love to see them in the facilities, not cramped like Matt mentioned at the middle school. They're tight. And it's an old school. It's one of our oldest schools we have, oldest campuses we have. So I'd love to see them have that space that they need to do that in. I would love to see the opportunities for our students at the high school. All the opportunities. Not every kid is going to be a college graduate. And that is okay. My husband's not a college graduate. He makes a heck of a lot more money than I ever made being an administrator. I always said that's not fair. I worked a lot harder than you did. But anyway, it's all about what's in your heart, your passion and your hard work. That's what makes you successful in life. Be it with a master's, be it with a doctorate degree, be it with a bachelor's degree or an associate's degree or a welding certificate or an HVAC certificate or a culinary certificate, whatever it might be. It's not, it's not that piece of paper. It's what's in your heart. So I pray, I pray. I hope that our schools will have wonderful options for our high schools. And our young kids will love to come to school because that's where you begin loving schools in the younger grades. Their teachers are compassionate and caring for them. Thank you.
The first thing that I would like to see is facilities. Because I had the opportunity to do the facilities tour. And I was able firsthand to see basically where we do our trades. Like Melanie said, I went to college. I now do nothing to do with what I went to college for. It's something I would have learned in a trade. And with the way our community in the area is growing, trades are never going away. I think college jobs are fading off to more based behind a computer. But trades, you're not replacing that with computers. So I think my biggest vision would be getting us facilities to be able to, for kids to come out of here. Because I don't know the percentage of how many kids go to college and finish and get a career. But we could set a lot of kids up for success. They could come right out of school and go to work if that's what they chose. My second thing would be, would be a destination district. We preach, preach that one Decatur would be the destination district. We have to have facilities that surround our district that are set up for that. You want to look at Decatur and say, okay, what do they have? Do they have this, this, this and this? That's where I want to be. That's where I want my kids to go. The final thing is, I would like for our elementary schools to not be C and D schools. I would like for somebody to move to this community and look up on the internet what Rand, Carson, Young, and see, well, there's no other option than Decatur. Because right now, they're beating every other school in ratings.
Well, number one on my list is going to be programs. You already mentioned all the academies that we have, but we want to get more programs. You may be surprised that one of our biggest programs at Northwest ISD is FFA. And you would think, well, that metropolitan district down there, we have a lot of kids that are interested in plants, animals, and all of those things that I had when I was a kid. So those kind of technical programs for those kids that might not want to go to college. Second is facilities. And we're trying to get a bond passed. We've got to build buildings every two to three years just for simply the flow that we've got in. Got to pass this bond to be able to get them out of portables and into permanent buildings. And third is to hire the best staff. Because you have to have a great staff in order to educate the kids that are interested in the kids, interested in developing them and bringing them into the educational fold, inspire them to read, inspire them to do math. Math is my thing. I'm a STEM engineer. So I love the STEM academy. I've hired kids as interns and as permanent employees. And I want people to understand the tech world and how to overcome it.
I think for me, it's going to be, I think financially, finances are a big thing with our district because of the growth and the facilities and things that need it. We certainly need bonds for the facilities. But I think we also need to not be surprised or not be hindered if the state or federal does something crazy. So ideally, we can get to a point where we can have a balanced budget or even a surplus. I mean, we have huge amounts of growth. That would be, you know, maybe it's a pipe dream, I don't know. But that would be something that would be nice, to have a little bit of a surplus in there so where if something happens, we don't have to cut educators' student programs. Or we don't have to have teachers going, okay, I'm a French teacher. Where am I going to do now? Because we cut French. Or you cut, like, you know, those types of things. Or asking the staff to do more with less. And so I think having that budget and that balance financially is huge. I think as a district, we have tons of programs. You know, I think we need to lean on all of the municipalities that encompass our district and work with the businesses to develop, maybe in seventh to eighth grade, trade schools and internships. So where you can't say, oh, I like math. So I want to do a STEM. Or, oh, you know, I want to do this or I want to do that. Or maybe they have an idea where they go, no, I know where my skill set is and I enjoy HVAC. Or I enjoy agriculture. And, you know, who knows? You could be like me and help enroll grass and cow fields. So there are options there. Not all of them end up at universities. In a district our size, statistically, a good chunk of our students aren't going to go to college. And that is great. Because we need trades. We need everything else in this world to where if we can set them up so they know in ninth or 10th grade what they want to do and then be that much farther ahead.
Go ahead and walk us through that.
Okay, so first of all, is there any questions for the backboard that was not answered or asked?
We just skipped number two.
Yeah, that was, because it was already there.
Yeah, okay. I have a question based on something a couple of you said. And this actually isn't a public school thing. But we have a huge group of homeschoolers in Wise County. And I heard something and I was just wondering what each of you think. Do you believe that the state should tell homeschoolers what curriculum they are allowed to use?
I do not. I think it goes back to parent's choice. I mean, as a parent, you're going to know what's best for your students or your children. I know at Northwest, we have some programs for the little ones, as parents, as teachers and those types of things to be supportive in that early education, if you choose. But I don't think the state should say, do you have to learn this and this? Because I think it goes back to one of the questions you had earlier about the state telling the school districts what we can teach and can't teach and then kind of losing our way as a community.
I think parents should have the ability to teach their kids what they need to teach them, whether it's faith-based, technical-based. But the state needs to offer some materials, some guidance if they want to use it. Kids can go all the way through their life and take a GR8, never step foot in the classroom. And that's fine. I've seen very successful people do that. So again, it's parent's choice and it should not be the state's.
I agree it is the parent's choice 100%. I do feel like the state should give guidance. Because I do know there are a lot of kids that are homeschooled that didn't transition into public schools. And with that transition, it can really hinder a child that is way above its rotations in homeschool going over to the public level, cause boredom. My younger daughter, when she gets into public school, she's, you know, we've exceeded what she's doing now. So I think it's going to hinder her when she goes to public school based on what we did as our own choice. But I feel like if the state gives a guidance that can align with your values and a child to go at the same level as a homeschool versus public school, I think it would be very beneficial for transitioning in and out of homeschool.
Well, I first thought, well, of course. Of course Texas State TBA should show them what to do. Because I was thinking of the TEACs, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills. They need that to know what those are to go to college. But then I thought, no, 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 no. Because there are kids that can take the college entrance exams, ACT or SAT, without going to public education and they're going to do fine on it. So I don't believe they have to. Now, it is like Dylan said, a situation when you get a student that's been homeschooled and they come into the school to see where they began. We usually would give them a released, sorry, we would give them a released test. He asked me my test question last time. We'd give them a released STAR test on their grade level to see if they were up to their academic level or beyond to help place them in what grade level we felt they should be. But yeah, no, parents should be able to have choice because they know that whatever that path that child's going, Uh, but yeah, no, parents should be able to have choice because they know that whatever that path that child's going, if they're going to college, they're gonna have them ready for their college entrance exam. So I don't, I don't believe so.
I think there should be a standardized curriculum. Uh, I certainly don't think that the state or the federal government should script what that is. I know there's a lot of gray curriculum out there. Uh, and I do think that they should adopt a curriculum that ratchets up from grade level to grade level, uh, in intensity. Um, I think the bigger issue here, uh, in my opinion, is the, the way our property tax laws work with regard to homeschool parents. Uh, I know it's very, very frustrating to homeschool parents that all of their tax dollars are going to the school district. Um, unfortunately, uh, if you wanna choose your own curriculum, but you also want your, your, your piece of the pie uh, from, from your state, uh, or local, um, what am I trying to say? Uh, property taxes, that's where it gets confusing in my opinion. You can't, can't have your cake and eat it too. So do I think they should be able to select their own curriculum? Absolutely. Uh, do I also think that, that there should be some conversation around, uh, funding, uh, parents who select, uh, a homeschool as an option or private schools as an option? I think that's something that we should talk about. Yeah.
Thank y'all for, uh, coming tonight. It's, uh, not easy to do and some great answers. Uh, I do have one quick, yeah. Do have one quick question for, uh, Dr. John. Uh, you mentioned earlier that, uh, in regards to the quarantine policy, that if a, if that was brought to the board and put on the agenda, you would vote, uh, for that. Uh, so my question to you, would you commit to calling an emergency meeting to put that on the agenda for y'all to vote on the quarantine policy, therefore into the mask policy?
Great question. He, he asks a very good question, uh, a question frankly that I don't have an answer to. Cause I don't, uh, selling policy is that, uh, is, is definitely, uh, a decision that is made by the board. Uh, calling an emergency meeting, we can absolutely do that if there's enough members who select that as a, as a good opportunity. Uh, unfortunately, when you start rewriting policies, the policy issue becomes what do people in Austin have to say about it? What does our school board attorney have to say about it? What does the Texas Education Agency have to say about it? What does our board attorney have to say about it? A lot of people, uh, will have to approve, if you will, um, the rewrite of that policy. So to answer your question, Jeremy, I'm absolutely not opposed to an emergency meeting to discuss this. Um, but the logistics of pulling that off, uh, are, are far more than, than I understand. Does that make sense?
It does, but I guess you said regardless of local health authority and regardless of what you said, you would call that and give that a vote.
But that has to be, the policy has to be rewritten first. The policy would have to be rewritten. Some of the quarantine policy is not what it is today.
It's the administration.
Uh, if you're, and, and that's the administration. They, they're the ones who have to do that. Uh, am, am I prepared to make a, a judgment call outside of our current policy? Absolutely not. And that's, that's why I voted the way I had the last two school board meetings. Yes, ma'am?
I have a, a question. Um, the mask mandate, uh, Governor Abbott announced it on March 2nd, that the mask mandate was gonna be dropped and it was effective in March 10th. The school board meeting was March 8th. Why hasn't, why has nobody done anything still? You know, every single day that a student keeps wearing a mask, that's just one day closer that they're getting to some sort of fungal infection, lung infection, bacteria infection. Um, I don't know who y'all talked to or where you get different information, but I, I had the, uh, Wise County rant and rave until somebody kept complaining and they took it down. Every week I had nurse after nurse after nurse always private message me and say, hey, can you say this? Or you can say, say that. I can't say it or it ruins my job. And saying, you know, telling me, hey, there's kids coming in here with bacterial infections in their stomach from breathing in the, the mask particles. Or there's kids coming in here with, you know, fungal infections in their lungs from, from their mask. It's not, they don't have COVID. It's, it's bacterial stuff. So calling an emergency meeting, that should've been done a month ago almost. You know, it was, it was announced on March 2nd. Why, why, why is it, why are y'all still waiting?
All right. Is that to me?
It's another great question. Uh, and again, uh, unfortunately, when the governor made the call that he did, he pushed the onus back on the school districts to do what they, they believed was right, uh, at their, at the local level. Some school districts are choosing to operate outside of their policy manual, outside of what they have committed to taxpayers that this is our policy manual. This is what we say we are going to do and subsequently we're going to do it. Um, the Texas Education Agency did not do us any favors. They gave us very little guidance, if any, uh, on, on what it was that we were able to do here except for follow what your policy says. And unfortunately, our policy says we take the counsel of the local health authority, who is Dr. John Walker. Um, it is what it is. And until we have a new policy, and, and again, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I have seven, there are seven school board members, six of whom could have put something on the agenda and have not to this point. So if the policy is rewritten and we have a different quarantine protocol, I am very much agreeable to changing the policy and unmasking our students.
Why can't we put it on?
Because we have, we have taken the council to this point. We've taken the counsel of our superintendent and he's brought it. He's brought it to us and he has said, if you want to operate within the confines of the policy that the board has adopted, this is what you're going to do. That's the option that's been on the table to this point.
I gotta follow up to that. So if that's the case, how come the elementary schools do not have to wear masks, but the middle school and high school did? It's the same superintendent that runs the whole district.
Correct. The, the elementary quarantine, the elementary, uh, the way elementary students attend classes is as a cohort. So they're moving from class to class to class largely, uh, as one group of students, uh, at the elementary level. At the high school, you have students going, they're just kind of figuring out all over that campus all day long. So from a contract tracing, which we say we're going to do under our policy, from a quarantine standpoint, which we say we're going to do under our policy, it's very complicated at the secondary level. Middle school and high school, it's a nightmare.
But the whole class had to be quarantined in the elementary school?
The whole class did. Yes.
And does that, does the policy not affect the district? Does it only affect the upper levels? Cause you're, cause you're saying policy is the reason why you cannot vote to unmask, but does the policy not apply to the elementary level?
We modified, not the policy, we modified the way, I'm trying to think of exactly what we did, but we were able to delineate secondary versus elementary.
Have chosen not to thus far?
Not to my knowledge. Um, to my knowledge, the policy is what the policy is. We have, we have operated, every decision that we have made up to this point has been within the confines of the policy.
I only have one man, and I know you don't want to ask my math question, but I only have one though. There are three who voted against what you're saying. So what, and you keep putting, putting it back on the law and the policy and this and this and this. But how come those three voted to remove them and you didn't stand with them? And the reason that I ask that is because that is, there's a cumulative thing going on here. And it talks, it's about, it's about bravery. It's about standing up. And the transgender issue is not coming. It's here. My son did a, a school lesson just the other day. He's in eighth grade with a young lady who believes she's now a boy. All right. And there's multiple kids in Decatur. I can't imagine in Northwest. So that's here. So those three board members voted, they stood up against what is the policy or the law yours or whatever. So we have other things that are coming in Wise County. And that's where I still come back to, why is it that those three could vote against the grain, but you couldn't stand with them and you've, and you stood on the other side?
I, I can't tell you why somebody votes the way they do. Uh, I can tell you that me personally, uh, I have done everything that I can and, and continue to do. Uh, my due diligence, when I research an issue, my goal is always to do what our policy says that we are going to do. And that's what I feel like I've done and we can agree to disagree.
No, no, no. And that's why I'm asking because I think if the policy comes, that we're going to allow this and you say, well, my hat here, when I'm, when I'm in here, it's that, but.
My, my position has been, has always been, if we can do it legally and within the confines of our policy, that is absolutely what I want to do.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. John. Uh, the situation is, you, you still believe the T E A is gonna do what's right? That's my first question. That was, that was a rhetorical question. Number one, unfunded mandates are known and it's ridiculous. As a former school board candidate myself, and I'll pass the wind of the school district unsuccessfully, I might add, thank God, in 2000, and being the husband of a professional educator, now professor of education, I can tell you what I've seen. And I've seen a lot of things that go wrong. The N E A, T E A needs to take a hike. Principals know what's going on in the school. We have much too middle level management. Principals know who can teach and who can't teach. We need to be teaching our kids how to think, not what to think.
That's right.
For the very first question up there, sorry I didn't get it. I had a lot to be up there. It almost was. The fact of the matter is government are to secure the rights of the people. The rights of life, liberty and a pursuit of happiness. With life and liberty, we can use the education that's available. And it means who are the child's first educators? Our parents. That, my friends, is the problem. We gotta turn this thing around, start being better parents. We gotta start teaching kids how to be better parents. Because that's what, kids come into school, they're hungry. Now I'm talking about a B or D school, but how many of those, how many of those administrators get to choose which students' tests are, are, are sent to T E A for evaluation or not, are excluded because the child can't speak English? This is horse heaven. I mean, it, it, it is not a true indication of the education that's going on within that school. Principals know it. They should be doing something about it. As far as the board goes, you're supposed to reflect the values of communities. You choose a superintendent to run the policies. If you don't like the policies, change them, even with T E A. If not, you fire that superintendent, hire somebody who agrees with you. School district charge us more in taxes than the city, county, community, college, div, combined. We wanna see some results with our money. That's what we wanna see. Or else maybe we should keep our money and give it to the homeschools. Provide the funding rather than going to, to the city, go to the schools where it's doing the work. So it's a situation, having been in, in public education my whole life, I understand the need. Our founders understood the need. Else they wouldn't have passed the Northwest Ordinance in 1789. The fact of the matter is it goes back deep. It goes back to the beginning. I would love to answer a lot of the questions here tonight because some of you need some work in that area. Cause I know it's hard being up where you're at. I've been there before. But the fact of the matter is, go back to the basics. Life, liberty, those are the things that are important. And with those things, you can pursue happiness if government will get the hell out of the way. But you're right, Dr. John, when it comes to that, get the government to get out of the way.
Okay. Do we have any questions? It's open to all the candidates instead of just one or something?
I don't need the microphone. I'd just like to say thank you. And we, I think I'm part of a, a majority. We bragged on our, our community. We bragged on our area. It's conservative. We like it like that. And we're gonna elect who we think is the best. And when we elect somebody, we're gonna trust you to do the right thing. And if it doesn't match up with what I think you ought to be doing, I'll find somebody else to take your place. And until then, I'm gonna assume that you know more about a situation than I do. What the law is or what protocol is or what T E A says. There's somebody who knows about it sitting in the chair here, but we don't all do that. There are very few of us who know what you know as you sit in those school board meetings. And we pledge our faithfulness to support you when you get elected, whoever it is. That's all I got to say about that.
All right. Well, let's, can we just do something tonight? Let's go ahead and thank these guys for being here tonight. It's, uh, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, we're gonna go ahead and call it, we've taken plenty of your time. Thank you guys so much for braving out. Uh, we know we asked probably some challenging questions and we put you on the spot on purpose. Uh, so thank you so much for that. And, uh, with that, we'll just, uh, can we just pray as we close tonight? That'd be good. Let's all stand. Father, once again, we do come to you and we do thank you for our communities. We thank you for Northwest I S D. We thank you for Decatur I S D. We ask you, Lord, that your hand would be upon them, that your hand would be upon every I S D represented within Wise County. And we thank you, Lord, for this place. We thank you for the people that live here. We ask for your grace. We ask for your favor. And we ask you, Lord, uh, to just, uh, give us the wisdom to know how to steward our communities according to your will and your plan and your purpose. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.